thirteen, consideration in action on change order number one for project number AD dash three eight dash zero five zero nine funded entirely with funds from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Mayor members of the commission, the city commission is requested to approve change order number one to allow for the excavation of approximately ten thousand cubic yards of dirt at the south end of runway one seven three five as shown on the illustration due to the existence of a runway protection zone problem being created by a berm adjacent to the city's north main drainage ditch inside of the airport. The cost to complete the work will be funded in its entirety with FAA funds. It is forty-two thousand dollars. The need to do this project and completed immediately came as a result of the annual inspection by the FAA safety inspectors. I recommend approval.
Okay, we have a recommendation for staff to approve this an action item. Do you have a motion? A motion to approve by Commissioner Samora. Second by Commissioner Gallin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to adopt resolution number twenty-ten dash zero twenty-two.
No, you skipped fourteen.
Fourteen.
Right.
Fifteen.
No, what he's saying, you skipped fourteen.
Fourteen, I'm sorry. Fourteen, consideration in action on a lease with SRA Automotive for a portion of hangar number seven of building number sixteen at the Brownsville South Padre Allen International Airport.
Mayor, city commissioners, we're requesting that you table this item until the next regular city commission meeting. We need to do some fine tuning with regard to the location.
Motion table, Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to adopt resolution number twenty-ten dash zero twenty-two, accepting a Federal Aviation Administration grant in the amount of three million nine hundred and two thousand dollars, two hundred, nine hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars.
The city, Mayor and city commissioners, the city commission has requested to accept the grant offer in the amount of three million nine hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars from the FAA. This acceptance should be in the form of approval of resolution number two thousand ten twenty-two and should be subject to review and approval of the grant contract by the city manager, the city attorney, and myself. The funds will be used to rebuild the primary air carrier taxiways from the main runway to the passenger terminal as taxiways Delta and Echo. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Would approve.
I don't think anybody's against getting free money. We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria. Second by Commissioner Gallin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, consideration in action to authorize the city manager to extend a professional consulting services contract on a month-to-month basis pending requests for proposals.
Mayor, city members of the commission, we are requesting the contract with DOS Logistics be extended for a few months as we go out on proposals, RFQs to seek consultants or another consultant for the city of Brownsville.
Will it be on a month-to-month basis?
Yeah, we already advertised on Sunday's paper. We should have everything ready to review April ninth and should have someone online by the first meeting in May.
So it'll be month-to-month, you're saying?
Yes, sir. For the DOS Logistics, yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to extend.
Hold on a second, Mayor.
I would just ask one thing, that instead of having this indefinite, have a certain period of time, whether sixty days or ninety days, so this just isn't carried on. In other words, there's a certain.
My question.
We advertised in the paper for April ninth deadline to get any and all participants that want to participate as being consultants with the city of Brownsville. We will open.
I think he himself has imposed a deadline, so I.
That's not clear.
Commissioner Trani?
I guess my concern is, is one, what would be the deadline for responses? And then two, what is the benefit of keeping them on month-to-month and what kind of productivity are they going to have on a month-to-month when they know that they're being looked at to be replaced?
Well, right now, we have some crucial issues occurring in Washington in relation to any and all legislative agenda items that we have prepared and sat down with DOS Logistics. As we speak, we are interested in findings and in visiting Washington in the next month or so, hopefully to get successful outcomes in relations to airport bus projects and any and all legislative issues we have with them. As you know, DOS Logistics was hired for, on a one-year contract. We've just started a momentum phase with them where we have sat down with them and some of our directors have already sat down with them and explained to them the needs we have and have created a bond. So right now, we are trying to just keep them on pace until we get proposals and start working on identifying any and all interested parties to present to the commission.
When was the last time they've come before the city commission to make a presentation?
Never.
Who's that, ma'am?
DOS Logistics. When was the last time they've been here?
From what I recall, I don't remember the last time they came.
And how long have we had a contract with them and they haven't been here?
One year, at the end of February.
Excuse me, may I say something? We have never requested, or the city commission has never requested for a presentation to be made, but they were ready anytime that we would ask them.
Yeah, okay, but Pete, have we received any kind of reporting from them?
Yes.
There's a report sent to the city manager on a monthly basis.
When does it come? Once a month?
They report to us, they report to us in writing once a month.
Okay, and have you shared those reports with the commission?
Well, they're very lengthy in size. The commission's welcome to come see me anytime they want. They're in our offices.
I have a question. Mr. Campbell, we've been in contract, or we haven't even had our first year with those logistics. I don't know if any other members of the commission have traveled with them. I have. I traveled with them last summer to Washington DC and they did a very good job. Because of this good job that they've done, why is it that we as a city council are going out again for RFQs? Is it at somebody's request or is this at a staff's request that we go out for RFQs?
The commission, when we went out on proposals approximately a year ago, voted to give them a one-year contract to see how they would perform. The concerns we have is that we need to stabilize this and have someone working with us more than just one year because we get into the legislative hearings, et cetera. We can't just pull someone out and start going out on proposals again. We need to have consistency. We need to show that we have loyalty and that we're going to work with them for a certain period of time. So when we go out on the proposals again, which we have already advertised, one of the things we want to be able to have within the contract is to be able to extend contracts with them. And also, what we'll have within the contract is for them to submit and present quarterly to the commission.
Sounds reasonable.
When we tried to do that this time, we had some issues because of the competitive nature of consultants, so we chose not to have them do a presentation today or in the prior few past.
That's fair.
Okay, so the concern here is that the contract is ended, because it's ended, they must go out for RFQs.
Which we already have advertised for, yes.
That's why.
Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, Pete.
I have the floor. Charlie, I get my, well, two things. My, one of my concerns is that when we do the year-to-year, it seems, it seems like in the past couple of, well, past year or two years, the contract has come up the same time that the city is getting ready to go to Washington. That can't happen. And I, maybe we don't look at the calendars, but you know, that is an issue and I totally agree. And we need to hopefully at this point keep that from happening or do it six months prior to the DC trip. I guess one of the other concerns that I had is, again, I realize that the commission has not asked for our consultants to come before the commission and present. I'm not too sure what contact prior, two months prior, had the consultants met with the directors. I think that too is very important, that our consultants are not only communicating with yourself, but with the directors to help push our, you know, our agenda. And I guess one of the other concerns I had is, you know, the communication with the commission. Because the last time that I went to Washington, they were helpful in setting up a couple of meetings, but I never met anybody, anyone from DOS Logistics. To this day, I can't put a face to who the reps are or, you know, who their folks are. And that wasn't years ago with previous consultants. You know who they were and you'd see them and you can talk to them over the phone or via email. And in this case, it's been, I know I haven't had that. And I guess the last thing I wanted to say is, I know we have a packet, a legislative packet that's already prepared, and I think you all did a good job on that. I would recommend that in the future that the commission be invited to participate. I know it's one thing to have the staff that deals the day-to-day business and yourself, and that's, and that's one side of it. I think the other side is what the, what the, what the commission and the mayor gets in terms of feedback from people. And I think if we can kind of blend both of those sides in, the staff's perspective as well as the community perspective, I think then we can, you know, we can, we can have a solid, a solid packet that addresses both issues. And it's not to say that any of the issues that are in the packet aren't worthy or shouldn't be considered. They all should. They're all very good.
Before we create the legislative packet, which is, ends with a narrative to John Cornyn, is DOS Logistics, and we do have a representative from DOS Logistics here in the audience, by the way, but we, they, we sat down with all the directors in preparing, in preparing that. DOS Logistics has met all our directors, including our key directors that have key issues to address in Washington. So that's been done. My apologies for not inviting the commission. That's done. I sent copies of the report to, to all the, the legislative report. If you want copies of this, of the, we'll put it on your desk, Mayor. It's easy for you. But we, it's a, it's a huge monthly report. It's gonna, it's gonna take four or five hundred pages.
A synopsis from you as to what, the meat of it to the commission is what they're working on would be nice.
And we're working to refine that and, you know, people, people seem to think that we've had lobbyists or consultants in the city for a long time. This is something, this is a new thing for the city. So working on refining that as well. And we will have quarterly reports to the commission as a mandate, as a mandate within, within the, within the materials that's submitted to the, the future lobbyists, whoever that may be.
Doctor Gallin, what's your?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Camarillo that the commission should have input into, into your report or into the legislative agenda because that's, that's part of what we do, is listen to the people out in the community and have different interests of our own. I also think that there are, I hope, there are benchmarks for lobbyists that, that we should be looking at to decide whether or not this particular firm or XYZ particular firm is performing to our best interests and not just that they were nice or, you know, whatever. Particularly concerning is what Commissioner Camarillo said, which was that he really didn't know who was the, was the agent when he went to Washington. I think that's one of their big roles, is to take us to the people that we need to see and not alone.
We'll work on that.
See, what I would like to see, Charlie, really it's a mood issue because we're going out to RFPs and we're going to have presentations. But what I would like to see is a report, a synopsis stating, you know, this quarter or this month, we met with Senator Cornyn, we met with Senator Hutchinson, we met with Congressman Ortiz, and took up infrastructure needs. We took up cities' needs, you know. Instead of us writing the check every month for fifteen thousand, whatever it is, we don't know what we're getting for it. You know, it'd be nice that we knew that they're earning those fifteen thousand dollars by contacting.
I'll go back, I'll go back to the year that they worked and I'll do that for you, Mayor. I'll submit it to them.
I mean, I'm just saying that that's what would be nice for us, that we know they're contacting, representing us on needs of our community.
A good benchmark is the county. They provide regular reports at their meetings on their agendas.
I'm sorry?
The county, and they're here, David Garcia does a regular report to the county commissioners on what their agenda.
I think they have DOS, right? They use DOS Logistics.
Okay. Anyway, we're going out for RFPs. There'll be presentations. The city manager requested this be done on a month-to-month.
Ask a question real quick?
Sure.
I just want to ask you real quick, when is the next legislative agenda in Washington? When is it? We haven't, we haven't confirmed the meeting date. Okay, but is it coming up? Yes.
P U B is April.
Well, then next thirty days, forty days?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we're gonna let them carry this out through and see what they do for us this time around? It's vital that we have someone there. Yes.
Can we amend this to include a sixty-day turnaround time, that we should have everything done and either stay with them or change or whatever else? And, I mean, I don't want to keep this open-ended.
Sixty days is what I, what I anticipate we need. So yes, if it, if it gets longer.
And if they, you know, get us millions and billions of dollars, then we'll keep them.
Okay, you want to make that into a motion, Commissioner Trani?
Sure, if we can.
If they get us millions and millions, I'll keep them.
You'll keep them?
Yes.
Motion to approve with a sixty-day cap?
Second.
Okay.
I had a comment.
Commissioner Longoria?
Last year when we went to Washington, DOS Logistics was a new firm to the city.
Yes, sir.
And in my opinion, the job that they did was a fairly good job. We stayed focused. We remained on what the city needed. Pete, Larry, Ben. We went in and we focused and we stayed true to what was said. We were, we met with key people, maybe with the exception of Kay Billy Hutchinson, but we did meet in the other offices with key people that we needed to meet with. And I believe that for the short time that we had been with them, that they did fairly well. Now, to respect the decision that we had for a one-year contract and then go out, you know, it's, it's fine. But I think that we need to clearly define what it is that we're doing. I don't want to be going to Washington within the next month and a half with a firm that, you know, is going to be concentrating on, am I going to keep my contract with you? Or am I here to take care of business and get you to the right people that I need to get you to? But, you know, maybe the decision that we made back then at, you know, to keeping it to a year was, might have been a bad one. But I'm afraid that that kind of, that kind of damages relationships, especially with DOS Logistics, whether the focus is going to be, am I going to keep your contract, you know, or what's going to happen on this trip?
I think our relationship with them now is better than it's ever been. To speak of that, they're here. If you want to speak to them in person. I don't believe that the momentum that we have right now is going to suffer. They understand we have a one-year contract with them and we fulfill that. And we just, we just want to make sure that we continue to work with them as we go out on these proposals.
I assume they're professionals, Charlie.
I, I would.
So I mean, I wouldn't worry about if they get their feelings hurt or not. They're professionals.
No, I'm, I'm getting my feelings hurt right now, so.
They're going to deliver. They're going to do their job. They're going to do the job. Who's here from DOS Logistics? Who's here?
Ms. Thompson.
Would you please stand up? And your name? Thompson, she said?
Thompson.
Thompson. You want to say anything? Do you want to say anything? Would you please come to the podium and for the record, state your name, Ms. Thompson?
Denise Thompson. We're looking to put together a trip to go to DC after Easter. I think it's like either the week of the thirteenth through the fifteenth or the week after that. So that's our next. We're working on.
Who are the principals in DOS Logistics?
My boss is Guma Ibarra.
Can you get close to the mic because I'm having a hard time hearing you.
My boss is Guma Ibarra and our president is his son Eric Ibarra.
Any questions?
At this point, if we want to add something to the legislative trip, is that possible?
Oh, yeah. We haven't set the actual agenda. We've just been tossing around ideas of who needs to go and what we want to talk about. And so we can actually modify it up to the day that we're there.
I like to see y'all work with our chamber. They develop a legislative package for the city also, and it's usually coincides with what we're doing.
That's part of the package.
Yeah, because I mean, it's important that we're all on the same page. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. There was a motion to approve this with a cap of sixty days. We'll have presentations in response to the RFPs at that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen.
Thank you.
Item seventeen, consideration in action regarding resolution number twenty-ten dash zero twenty-five, in support of the construction of the east loop and dealing with related matters.
Mayor members of the commission, I've asked Pete Sepulveda from the county administrator's office to address the issue.
Mr. Sepulveda, welcome to our chamber.
Mayor and commissioners, for the record, my name is Pete Sepulveda and I'm here in my capacity as the coordinator for the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority. In the next couple of months, we're going to be submitting an application for funding under the pass-through financing program that the Texas Department of Transportation has. However, one of the requirements for an application to be considered is that the project has to be on the state highway system. Currently, because there is no, no project, it's not on the, on the TechDOT system. But we go back six, eight years, there's been an agreement, a verbal agreement between the city, the county, and TechDOT that once the east loop is constructed and operational, the county would assume responsibility for the maintenance of a portion of Dockberry Road, and the city would assume responsibility for the maintenance of Central Boulevard all the way to Elizabeth, heading Palm Boulevard. TechDOT will not add any additional miles to their highway system. So the idea here is, and I believe the east loop, depending on, on the final alternative, is going to be about eight to nine miles. And so we must take eight or nine miles out of the highway system to be able to accommodate the east loop. If, if the commission is in agreement with this, the county already passed a resolution, we will submit our funding application in mid-May. If we are funded, and when the project is operational, then, like I said earlier, the county would assume responsibility for maintenance on Dockberry Road and the city will take over Central Boulevard. This, like I said, it's been a verbal agreement between the three entities for at least six or seven years. If this resolution is approved by the city, TechDOT District Office will go ahead and submit a minute order that will be on the Highway Commission meeting for the April meeting. So the idea is to have that in place so that by the time we submit the application for funding in mid-May, we won't be denied the opportunity to compete for funds in the pass-through financing program.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion before we open up the questions?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Atkinson to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora. Any questions? Any discussion?
Mayor, I do.
Mr. Camarillo, recognize?
The Central Boulevard to US, to US two eighty-one, to Palm, Elizabeth, and Washington, do we know what that equates to? I mean, financially, what TechDOT is going to take away from themselves and now we're going to now encumber that? Do we know in terms of costs that they've done over the past couple of years or on a yearly basis, what it takes to maintain those, if any?
I can't give you an exact number right now, but what I can tell you, and we've had the discussion with TechDOT, is that before the city assumes responsibility of the maintenance, TechDOT will overlay it. And so it will be in, in, maybe not similar condition as the east loop because the east loop will be a brand-new road.
Of course.
But it'll be overlaid to where your maintenance over a number of years, and overlay probably is good for about, based on the level of traffic on, on Central, probably a good four or five years. So, but we can, we can, you know, if it's four or five miles, you know, you're probably looking at about thirty, forty thousand dollars annually for maintenance.
Okay. But they will overlay it?
Yes.
Before they end it? Okay.
Yes.
Let me ask something real quick. You keep mentioning Central Boulevard. That's west loop, isn't it?
I, I couldn't hear that.
Isn't that west loop? Isn't the east loop going from Veterans to the Port of Brownsville to Five-Eleven? That's the east loop.
No, we're talking about, yes.
Right? The east loop's from.
The east loop is from.
Coming off the expressway, taking a left on Five-Eleven, coming around to Veterans Bridge. That's the east loop we're talking about, where, am I right? Central Boulevard and two eighty-one, that's more of a west loop thing.
What he's discussing is that we have to take over, in other words, Central Boulevard will become a city street now.
Right.
And we're responsible for the maintenance because they're taking on an additional eight to nine miles on the east loop.
On the east loop. Oh, okay.
So we have.
They're mitigating.
It's an exchange, you know. We're, TechDOT will not add any additional miles to their system. And so the only way to accomplish this is to, to take out the same amount of mileage. And that's why we're splitting between county and city. But, and if we don't do this, then we're not going to be able to compete for the funding statewide. Now, we submitted an application previously and, again, it was kicked out last year because of this technicality, even though we had a verbal agreement with the district office at TechDOT. So this year, we want to make sure, because last year when we submitted the application, we were told that we competed very well statewide with other projects. So we're hoping that this time around, we will get funding for the east loop. If we do, we're probably about twelve months away from getting environmental clearance. And if that's the case, then we're probably about eighteen, twenty-four months from, or we can be eighteen, twenty-four months from construction start date.
Pete, when you're looking.
Best jobs here, too.
Pete, when you're looking at this list, are these least, the least cost?
Yes, we had.
The maintenance to keep up.
We go back to when Larry Brown was the director of planning. But we worked with Larry, and I do not remember who the Poly Works Director was at that time. We worked with Mark Lund at the NPO and then at the city, at the county level with the County Engineers Office. But we had a lot of meetings with TechDOT and determining which roads. Again, you got to get to the exact amount of mileage that TechDOT is adding that they have to delete. So it took us a number of years to come up with, with the portions of the roads that, that we're going to be assuming responsibility for.
Pete?
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item number eighteen, consideration in action to adopt an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Cameron County to provide the city's cost share for, for the installation of a traffic signal in front of Veterans Memorial High School in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars and thirty-one cents.
Mayor and commissioners, again, my name is Pete Sepulveda. I'm here in my capacity as county administrator for Cameron County. We have discussed at the NPO level, of which the city, county, and BISD are members of, the need for a traffic signal light at the new, the entrance of the new high school. I believe there's been at least one fatality already. And so the idea here is to split the cost of the labor and equipment. TechDOT will come in and provide the materials necessary. And what we're going to do is add a turning lane, basically. And once we add that turning lane, TechDOT will come in and construct a traffic signal light at that intersection. We were hoping, I believe, that the school will be open for employees either in April or May. So we're not going to be able to meet that timeframe, but we should be able to meet the timeframe by the time the school is open.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Will it approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Samora. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item nineteen, consideration in action to adopt resolution number twenty-ten dash zero twenty-one, expressing official intent to reimburse costs incurred to relocate rail lines in the downtown area to the city, generally known as the West Rail Project, construct street and drainage improvements and acquire rights of way for highway improvements being funded in part by the Texas Department of Transportation.
I don't know, Mayor, members of the city commission, this resolution is just authorizing us in case we're going to be spending money on some of these projects, which is the West, West Rail, as well as acquiring some right-of-way or selling right-of-way acquisition for, on the Five-Eleven, and also for street improvements that will be done in the future. So far to date, on the West Rail, that the city has spent, and by the way, there is a PowerPoint handout in case you cannot see the numbers clearly, on the, that I had passed out earlier. And if we can look on number two, slide number two, you'll see that the, that the city so far has paid, has spent two million, one hundred and three thousand, five forty for the West Rail project. We need approximately about one point nine million dollars to complete the project. Initially, what happened several years ago, the city had planned to build an overpass connecting the Amigalene. And at that time, when they were going to construct the, the overpass, it was taken to the public and there was public, there was opposition from the public that they didn't want an overpass in their community. So, and we had borrowed about two million dollars at that time to construct, it was our local share. It was later decided that maybe the best bet was to relocate the rail that was in the downtown area and move it to the west side and, and to the west side of town. And this is what this project is. Now, but it's going to take a little more money to, I know that Mr. Sepulveda can probably add more to it because the project is, it's a, it's a major project that's going to cost many millions of dollars to complete. But our share is going to be approximately four million, and we need about two million from our share. But our share is going to be approximately four million, and we need about two million from our share. So that's, that's part of the reimbursement resolution that we're asking. And we're also asking for about six hundred thousand dollars for right-of-way acquisition on 511. Now, this is going to be through issuance of certificates of obligation. We have two choices, either we get out of the general fund reserve, which we, we, we don't recommend. This is a, a twenty-year project to pay back by borrowing this funds. And so we are, tonight, where all you're doing is approving a reimbursement resolution for in the future when we issue certificates of obligation. And we have already spent some of this money from the general fund. The general fund can get reimbursed.
Can I have a motion?
Hold on, I have a question.
Can I have a motion? I'm looking over the question. A motion? Is there a motion?
I'll motion to table.
Do you want to table it?
Um, motion, well, I don't want to motion approve without asking the questions that we need to ask, so. I got a motion something.
I'll second that, motion table.
Go ahead.
Pete, my, my concern is this. We heard Mark talk about the NPO and that they've approved the, they've given, you know, they've agreed to support the, the West Loop, West Parkway tollway deal. If we set these monies aside to move these tracks, are any of those funds, those, that four million that the city has to come up with, is that to improve the existing, well, once they're moved, to do any improvements to where the tracks are currently at? Or do, my concern is that these monies go to help support the West Loop, which the city said, we don't, we don't want to support. We don't, we don't like. Yet, this is something that they may want to continue to push forward. And so I just want to know if any of those four million, any of these funds are going to go towards supporting that project?
This is strictly for the West Rail Project.
To move the tracks, correct?
To complete the construction of the, and actually, Mr. Sepullo, maybe you can add to it?
That's correct. This is strictly, we're talking the West Rail relocation project. And so any funds would be for the relocation of the rail lines and the construction of the new International Rail Bridge. The West Parkway project's a totally different project. We're strictly talking the, the rail relocation project. And obviously, you know, y'all were talking about professional consultants earlier. That's, we're looking at about a thirty-five million dollar project. And county staff have been able to acquire about thirty million dollars in federal funds or state funds for this project. One, one of them, and Pete mentioned that y'all had the PowerPoint. One of the slides in there, about a year, year and a half ago, we competed nationwide for grant money from the Federal Railway Administration. And we, Cameron County West Rail Project was the project with, that was funded the most with grant money, which was four million dollars. Pete mentioned that in the late nineties, TechDOT, the city had a overpass project over Sixth and Seventh Street. And that project, you know, basically did not materialize. And that's how this project evolved. But I want to make a point in that if the city would have chosen the route of building overpasses over major arterials, for example, 802, Alton Glor, or Military Highway, your local share would have been much higher than the four million dollars that, that you're going to be investing in the West Rail Project. Just counting probably about four or five of those overpasses of a total of nine that are needed, your local share would have already been twenty-eight million dollars. We, we, and so the idea in, in getting the federal funds is to minimize the local participation. And again, between now, and we won't have final numbers until we actually bid out the project and, and we have a bid, but statewide, the bids have been coming in, you know, twenty, twenty-two percent under the budget. So if that's the case, then the local participation will be much, much lower.
I got a question.
Commissioner Akerson?
Pete, I've talked to you many times about this, and I have, it's hard for me. You're saying we might have to go out for bonds, Pete Gonzalez? To give four million dollars? We're going to get...
Two million. This is what, this is, this is a reimbursement resolution.
And this is what I have?
Right.
This is how I, I feel about it. We're going to go out for bond and ask the taxpayers to, 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 we're going to ask to raise their taxes for this money from Brownsville. There's four million dollars that we have to pay into getting these tracks out. The tracks are going to be, I guess we want the Rest Rail to be moved out of there. I totally agree with that. But then here comes, what, that land, what we're, what I'm talking to Mark Sossi about is that land, those tracks. What, how is the city, how can the city get their money back that they're investing? Are we going to have any ownership at the Rest Rail Bridge? From what I'm told, you have, we're, we're going to put four million dollars into moving these tracks for a private company, UP Rail, that's going to own the whole bridge? Isn't there something there? Plus, it's on inside-city limits now, or before it wasn't. Is the city being safeguarded in a way where we generate revenues back from that Rest Rail? We're, we're going to put all this taxpayer money into it to give it to a private owner later? That, that, that's what I see, and I have a problem with that. Because then, once you take out the tracks, then here comes the Rest Parkway, who's going to be a toll street on these, on all this property? That, does it belong to the city or does it belong to UP? Who does it belong to? I mean, those are the questions that, that we need to ask, because we all want the, the rail to get out, to move to the, to the, to the west side and out of our city, but at what cost? So how can we generate those four million back through charging fees at that new rail bridge? Or by B&amp;M Bridge, which now, the, from what I've been told, the hundred-year permit's gone? So is the City of Brownsville now going to have to go after owning B&amp;M Bridge so we can get those revenues back? How, how is the city being safeguarded in the next fifteen years? I, I just don't see myself putting four million dollars into something where the City of Brownsville, yes, we get the rail, the rail, the rails out of there, but here comes, you know, we're, we're, it's like, we're going to give it to a private owner. I, I don't know if, if the taxpayers would agree on going out for bond to hand over this West Rail Bridge to UP Rail? I mean, where does the city come back and generate money? And can something be negotiated that, if we do give those four million dollars, that B&amp;M Bridge gets converted to a city, city-owned, uh, bridge, which it should have been a long time ago? I don't know why we didn't take it for the sins of our fathers. But why didn't, why can we not come back and generate revenues at that bridge for the City of Brownsville? It just seems like the city's being overpassed all the time, and we're, who's going to, who's going to look after Brownsville? Once we go out for bond and move these rail, uh, the, the rails?
We're mixing up the, all the issues here, but please respond.
Well, Commissioner, this, this decision was made several years ago by previous city commissioners, whereby they agreed to go ahead and pay for that relocation of that railroad track out of the downtown area.
And the value is that we, we're, we're taking out the bottleneck that's caused...
We don't have the problems that we had in the past from...
And the safety, also safety problems.
That was the idea, so.
And it improves the, the overall, or beautifies the city. Not the Hattler Road Yard right there, or the tracks there.
And we have already spent two million. We're lacking two, two more.
And then it opens it up for the West Parkway, or bicycle trails, or whatever. It opens it up for that.
I totally see your point, and I know why they need to be out of there. But what is the city doing to safeguard future revenues from the B&amp;M Bridge or from the Rest Rail Bridge? I mean, is UP going to just say, hey, City of Brownsville, this is our bridge? We can charge whatever we want to charge, or what?
Yeah, from day one, I mean, UP made it very clear that they were going to be the owners of, of the West Rail Bridge. And we understood that. The project was being done because we, out of two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties in the state, Cameron County is ranked number eight in auto train collisions. We have fourteen at-grade intersections between the Olmito Switch Art and the B&amp;M Bridge that, on a daily basis, carry over five-hundred thousand vehicles. Train today goes through the downtown area of Brownsville. It goes through residential areas. It goes through commercial areas. It goes through parks. If the city decided ten years ago that they were going to pursue constructing overpasses as opposed to taking the rail out, as I mentioned earlier, your share would have been about twenty-eight million dollars. Whether you do overpasses or you take the rail out, in nineteen seventy, the population of the City of Brownsville was fifty thousand. In the year twenty-ten, it's probably going to be two-hundred thousand. The projection for the year twenty-thirty is five-hundred thousand. The projection for the year twenty-fifty is eight-hundred thousand. So regardless of, of which route we go, something has to be done because the population growth that the city is going to experience over the next twenty years is, is just, you know, out of, out of this world. And so it's a quality-of-life project. You're not going to be gaining anything from the West Rail itself in terms of any tolls, because no tolls will be collected. But today, industry is, is constrained in when train traffic can go into Mexico because of the congestion problems in Brownsville and especially in Matamoros. With a new rail crossing, which, this will be the new, this will be the first international rail bridge between the US and Mexico in over a hundred and five years. With a new crossing will allow industry in the Brownsville area to be able to ship their goods more frequently by train than when they do today.
And safer.
And, and a lot safer. According to Union Pacific and, and the Mexican Railroad Company, which is Kansas City, Southern Mexico, the trip between Brownsville and Monterey is going to be cut by about an hour and a half. And so that's a huge savings for industry. It's a huge savings for the train operators in Mexico and in the US.
But fifty rail...
And obviously, that, that's a, a good marketing tool that BDC, and especially the Port of Brownsville, which will be a, a big benefactor of this project. And that if we're able to send trains more frequently and, and not have any at-grade intersections, you know, it'll be a lot safer. And so, yes, it's an investment the city is making, but at some point, the investment was either in taking the rail out or building overpasses. And eight, nine years ago, the decision between the county, the city, and TechDOT was that we will relocate the rail out of the City of Brownsville and take it from an urban area to a rural area.
And it'll make it easier to develop the Amiguelan area.
Yeah. The, the ownership of the B&amp;M Bridge, that's a totally separate subject from this project. I, I do know that the concession on the Mexican side expired back in September. It was a, a one-hundred-year concession that they had. Now, whether, if on the US side, there's any ownership issues between the City of Brownsville and Union Pacific, then that's something that needs to be looked at. I'm not, I'm not familiar with that. But that can be done concurrently and independently of, of this project. And if the city has documents to prove that the city donated that right-of-way to Union Pacific and there are reverted clauses, well then, you know, that's, it is what it is, and your case is strong.
This is a positive thing. I'd like to move on and get a motion to approve in a second. It's going to improve the streets, the drainage, uh, safety, overall quality of life here.
I think there's a motion to table. It's pending.
Well, I would like to continue, just to make everybody understand what we have done in the past and what we're going to be continuing. If you recall, we have already spent some of these funds that were approved by a reimbursement resolution going back to March third, two thousand nine. We have already spent two-point-two million dollars. With, with the understanding that we were going to issue certificates of obligation. Now, this has already been spent. If we don't issue certificates of obligation, we're going to have to go in and get it, get this from the fund balance. So that means our fund balance is going to be reduced by two-point-two million. That's what we've already spent, and that's something that we needed way back then. We had needed some police vehicles. We've already purchased the police vehicles, nine-hundred and three thousand. Landfill project, we, we needed some traffic lift, uh, lift truck. We also needed an ambulance. All these monies have already been spent. We were authorized way back in March of two thousand nine to spend on the general fund and get reimbursed with certificates of obligation. The certificates of obligation have not been issued. So if they're not issued, like I said earlier, general fund will now not get reimbursed, and we're going to hit the fund balance. This is the, we have other needs in the, in the county, because we always, we always hear people, citizens complain about certain things that we need to get things done. And we just don't have the reserves or the revenues to do some of the projects. So the only thing we look at is we borrow money. We look at a twenty-year, a five-year payback. This is the list that we have right now for certificates of obligation for this coming year. We have the police vehicles, which we've already spent, landfill, which we've already spent, traffic, which we've already spent, ambulances. The only thing that's not added here, obviously, is the, library has problems with their roof, the West Rail Project, the two million, the 511 right-of-way. And then we were going to add five million for streets, because obviously, there's a lot of needs for construction of, of streets. This is something that we were planning, and I was planning to bring to you at a later date. And really, that's it, so.
Thank you, Pete. We've got to look at the big picture. We're committed towards this project, basic decisions made prior. There are positive effects because of it. I think if we do not pass this, this is sending the wrong message to TechDOT. It's sending the wrong message to our, 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 our bond rating agencies, because we're going to be eating our reserves. We got to pay this money. So can I have a motion to approve?
I still move.
I think there was already a motion to table.
I had not called for a motion. Uh, uh, I'm calling for a motion now.
For the table? Because you asked for a motion to table, remember?
We did table.
Okay. You have a motion to table then? Did we have a second?
Yeah.
Did we have a second?
There was a second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor of, well, any, any further discussion? Any, uh, all in favor? To table? Nay?
Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion. Is there any way we could table the, table the, the, the amount requested for the West Rail and approve the, the seals for the projects that we've already spent? Because that's lumped in here, isn't it?
Yeah. We are not asking you to approve, to issue certificates of obligation. All we're telling you is that this is coming up in the near future, probably next month. What I was saying is that we are going, we're requesting for you to authorize us to get two million dollars, reimbursement resolution for the Rest, West Rail, two million dollars. That's all this item is for.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a motion second.
Voting on the motion to table.
We have a motion second. All in favor of the table?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay?
Who's nay?
Nay?
Nay.
Commissioner LaGuardia?
To table.
To table? So that, is table prevail? Get the money from the fund balance then.
Only the mayor and Commissioner Samora? To table, to our day?
Motion table passed. Commissioner Camarillo, Longoria, Akerson, Triani, voted to table.
We want to make sure we understand you. There are some invoices that are submitted to the...
I'll get it all together and we'll look at it all.
When we're, there's invoice submitted for the West Rail Project, I, we will not pay those invoices.
I, I understood you. We've got to reimburse, you know, we've got to pay for that. It's already committed. It's done.
As long as we all understand that, we will not pay.
But we've still got another...
What did you say?
I'll retract my motion.
Okay. We have a motion to reconsider then? So it, it fails. Can we have a motion to pass?
Will it approve?
Okay, we have a motion to approve of Commissioner Samora.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Longoria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think it's the right thing. Thank you, Pete. It, it passes. I assume Commissioner Camarillo...
I'm going to vote nay.
Akerson and Triani's nay?
My vote remains the same. I'd like to see everything at one time instead of getting hard-fetched.
We have two nays, three nays, okay? But it did pass.
The reason I, the reason why I bring this up, because this is coming up in the very near future, and I don't want to appear and say, well, you didn't, you never told us about this.
I understand. Thank you.
I'd like for, for you all to go back too and find out, once they remove those rails, all that land that's all over Brownsville where these tracks are, if they belong to the city or they belong to UP? I want to know that, I need to know that answer, for the sake of the citizens of Brownsville who think we own all this land.
The state owns it.
How do you know that? How do you know that, Mayor?
Because I was told at NPO.
Oh, you were told that? I've asked Pete Subula for that information, and he's supposed to be...
Very brief, let him address it real quick.
Our lawyer's looking at it, too.
The rail line itself, now, the rail track, there are deeds that right-of-way is owned by Union Pacific. Where the bridge itself is at, I don't know. City Attorney mentioned that there were agreements between city and B&amp;M Bridge Company when the city donated that property in the nineteen twenties. I'm not sure the bridge was operational in nineteen oh-seven, so I don't know if after the bridge had been operational for ten, fifteen years, if the city donated additional right-of-way for customs of voter protection. I can't tell you that, but I can't tell you for the right-of-way, for the rail track itself, there are deeds. And as I mentioned earlier, I know the concession on the Mexican side, you know, I have a copy of that concession. That expired last September.
But the land where the rails are coming from Olmito down this way...
The track is Union Pacific, and there are deeds.
But doesn't that revert to the state?
That goes to the state, yes.
That was my understanding.
If you're talking about where the bridge itself is at, that I don't...
No, I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about...
Yeah, but we found information that the city does have deeds to stuff around...
That's over there, a separate issue.
Mr. Mayor, we're in the process of reviewing those old documents. There were a series of agreements between the city of Brownsville, Union Pacific, and even the railroads that came before Union Pacific relating to hundred-year easement agreements, and the hundred years have expired. We're in the process of plotting where those rail lines are, and we'll have a report to the city commissioner in the next...
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Next item, item twenty-one?
Item twenty. Item twenty.
Twenty-one?
Consideration and action regarding resolution number twenty-ten dash zero twenty-three to amend the general fund budget to provide one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars funding for the impala drainage project, seventy thousand dollars for a traffic signal, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and four dollars for the city's share of a traffic signal in front of Veterans Memorial High School, forty thousand dollars for litigation-related expenses, and fifty thousand dollars for unemployment insurance costs.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, these are budget amendments that we need. Earlier, you approved the traffic signal for Memorial High School, that's twenty-nine thousand six hundred. There are problems with the impala drainage for about one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars that we need to spend. Unemployment insurance, fifty thousand, traffic signal, maintenance, seventy thousand dollars, total three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand six oh-four. Let me give, give me a review of what has happened so far this year with budget amendments. I'm not gonna go into it so far. This is, we have the revenues on one side and the expenses on the other side. Most of them are grants. The only amount that we've so far, the city commission has proved is eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand three hundred. At the beginning of the year, when we set up the budget, we had eighty-seven million seven-hundred-and-forty thousand in revenues and eighty-seven thousand seven forty in expenses. As you can see there, we have the three million dollars from the PUB for academic assistance. It was balanced, the budget was balanced at the, at the beginning of the year. So far, based on some of the budget amendments that have been approved by the city commission, there's, they're in the middle, which has budget amendments, two-hundred, two thousand ten, that has affected the fund balance so far this year, where the United Brownsville, twenty-five thousand. We transferred five-hundred thousand to the airport fund, and then just recently, we had a budget amendment for the Lowell Home Center infrastructure improvements. So far, we had got into the reserves for eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. If you look at that schedule, the fund balance at the beginning of the year, unaudited seventeen million dollars plus. Budget revenues, ninety million eighty-five thousand four sixty-two. We have expenditures of ninety-two million six sixty-five seven fourteen. We estimate the fund balance at September two thousand ten of fourteen million four fifty, which is about fifteen-point-six percent of reserves. With the changes that we're asking you tonight, which includes the impala drainage project with one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, a traffic signal upgrade, and this is for Coffee Port and Old Port Isabel Road, seventy thousand, Veterans Memorial High School traffic signal, twenty-nine thousand six oh-four, and then you have the unemployment insurance cost, fifty thousand. If you approve the budget amendments tonight, then the expenditures are going to be now ninety-two million nine eighty-five three eighteen, which now leaves a fund balance, an estimated fund balance of fourteen-point-one. This schedule shows the, the other changes that we are not, we know that there's gonna be a shortfall. We, based on the sales tax so far this year, we are seeing a shortfall of two-point-three million. And then we also have the crossings at Veterans Bridge have reduced, so there's a revenue shortfall of three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. We didn't, we did receive the one-point-five million for, from PUB. So with this, this is just estimates as far as revenue shortfalls.
What about the three million, Pete? The three million?
The three million is already included in this schedule right there. It's already there. It's part of the fund balance.
You called it economics...
Yes, which I covered already. So right now, the base, this is just, again, estimated projections. We're down to twelve-point-eight million dollars from the seventeen million, okay?
Thirty-point-eight compared to fifteen-point-six.
Okay, then this, this gives you another, why do we, this is just the history of the last four years. In two thousand seven, our fund balance in the general fund was seventeen-point-six million. We had an increase in two thousand eight. We had a good year in two thousand eight. We increased nine-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand six twenty-seven. Two thousand nine, which, this are unaudited numbers, we dropped one-point-five million. Two thousand ten, estimated, we could drop between three million and four million dollars. And this are the backup for some of the sales tax. Last year, we had a decrease, and that's why we see a decrease in the fund balance. Our sales tax dropped five-and-a-half percent. How are we doing this year? Well, we're not doing well. We're down eight-point-five-two actual, nine-point-three-three budget. What does that do to the budget at the very, at the end, towards the right bottom? We show a budget shortfall of two million three seventy-two. If you look at that schedule under, called, over-under two thousand ten budget, we started the year bad, three-hundred-and-one thousand under, three-fifty-eight-hundred, seventy-seven thousand. Then we saw a plus in January of twenty-one thousand. We assumed that things were gonna get better, but we just got our allocation or the check or the distribution in March. We recorded in February. We saw a decline of fourteen-point-four percent. It's anybody's guess. Is this gonna continue? Well, if we assume that we will have a nine-point-three-three percent decrease between now and the end of the year, we're gonna have a budget shortfall in sales tax of two-point-three million dollars. And this is just another example of our sales taxes. We had strong years. We're not seeing that anymore. Again, we're looking at the, in the past, I've shown you charts of the nineteen-eighty-two recession, the ninety-four recession, and now we're looking at the recession of two thousand, fall of two thousand eight, which is fiscal year two thousand nine. Bridge fund, we, this is another, another example, the crossings at Veterans Bridge. Two thousand six was a very strong year, but look at the, at this chart, how declines in revenues from the, from the bridge. And again, this is another, another area that we're facing. Anyway, it's, I hate to bring you bad news, but that's the way it is.
Well, there's nothing you can do about that, Pete. We just encourage people to fly Brownsville first, shop Brownsville first, eat Brownsville first, and spend your money in Brownsville instead of going to McAllen or someplace else like many people do. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Again, we recommend that you approve the budget amendment.
Thank you. This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Samora, second by Commissioner Longoria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one?
Item twenty-one. Consideration and action to fund the city's cost share of the Valley Air Care project in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, this is the Brownsville share of the Valley Air Care project. I have before me Mr. Bill Ashton and Renee Perez with South Texas Emergency Care Foundation here to explain the project in case you have any questions.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you for hearing our presentation. Of course, the Valley Air Care program has been in effect since nineteen ninety-five. Brownsville has been being a big part of, of the Valley Air Care project. We service the Rio Grande Valley. We service the city of Brownsville as well. We bring patients into the city of Brownsville, to the trauma facilities that you have here. We also take patients out of the city of Brownsville when there's specialty care like burns and things like that, and it can be taken care of here locally in the valley. So the, the project itself is utilized to help transfer patients out to specialty care centers, burn centers in San Antonio, or heart centers, or cancer centers in Houston and what have you. Yes, sir?
Quick question. How many times this last year, or this year, in the whole year, does Brownsville utilize this Valley Air Care? How many times have you brought people in, and how many people have you taken out in one year?
We've had approximately between thirty, thirty-five patients that we've brought into the city, and then we've taken out probably about forty-five to fifty patients out of the facilities here in Brownsville.
Okay, this is an action item. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Next item?
Item twenty-two. Consideration and action regarding housing guidelines for the implementation of Hurricane Dolly assistance grants.
Move to approve.
Just a little summary, honorable mayor and city commissioners, the city of Brownsville was awarded one-point-two million by the state for Hurricane Dolly repairs to homeowners. The guidelines here tonight basically spell out how we're gonna be contracting this work, the priorities of the program, women with children, the elderly, and the, and the contract modifications that we'll do with the contractor. So that's basically what the state is asking for, that we set up guidelines, how we're gonna conduct this work. So I ask for your approval of this.
Can I have a motion approved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gallon, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Honorable mayor, I'm sorry.
Item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three. Consideration and action regarding a funding agreement between the city of Brownsville and Boyd Gardens LLC for the construction of multifamily housing units.
Honorable mayor and city commissioners, a couple of months ago, I presented a zoning case, a specific use for some apartment units on Bowie Road. That application was successfully approved by this commission. They did, this was, it's a tax credit application to the state. The state has approved tax credits, but they also are, have approved an application for what they call TCAP, and that's an incentive program. It's era money to the developer. What we're asking here for tonight is for a loan that's been capitalized with the proceeds of a program that was years ago by the name of UDAG, Urban Development Action Grant. Those proceeds, that loan, loan balance, or that fund balance of that loan, we, the initial loan was to Lopez Supermarkets. They've paid all of that back, so we have a capitalized loan pool. For this type of very special project where it's a but-for, you know, but-for this money, the project cannot happen. Well, there's the same situation here. The state requires a local commitment, and then they would benefit, they would grant over six million dollars to this project to make this project, project a success. Tonight, the proposed loan is for four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. It's an interim financing loan that will be paid back in twelve months at the annual percentage rate that, that's on the day of closing, whatever that annual percentage rate is, that's what the interest rate will be. The loan agreement needs fine-tuning. Somebody did it to Schozzy. He needs to do a little bit more work on it. So what I ask for you tonight, basically, the loan will be four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand for twelve months, interim financing at the annual percentage rate, vary between one-point-four to four percent. What I ask for you is that if you can approve this loan agreement, we modify it. A lot of the, the language in the agreement is boilerplate, it's requirements by HUD. What I ask for you is to approve this, and then I will bring it back to you under consent agenda at the next meeting. And like that, I'll give the parameters of the loan, which is four-hundred-and-fifty-five for twelve months, and the annual percentage rate. Give time for our city attorney's office to fine-tune the, the language. Also, the attaching, as part of the agreement, the agreement from the state, which is a little bit more detailed, they basically spell out how many units, what the income level of those units that people will be residing in, and how much tax credit funding they're giving, and the commitment of the principles to this project. We're basically doing the same thing. I'm trying to mirror that agreement with a little more of HUD terminology and HUD requirements. Also putting in that, you know, the commitment of hiring local contractors, local subcontractors as much as possible. I think it's a good project. It's funded by the state. We approved this for the zoning case. It would provide, it would leverage over six million dollars to this local community, provide jobs, and more importantly, as a housing proponent, housing for, affordable housing for families.
Move to approve.
Excuse me, mister...
Motion approved.
Excuse me, mister mayor. Mister Medina is correct, and that disagreement does need some fine-tuning, but my recommendation to the commission would be to table it, to let us do the revisions so it's done correctly, and then to bring it back to you for a vote.
We have a motion to approve. Staff recommended, do you want to withdraw your motion? Or you want to...
I can withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your motion, okay. Do we have a motion to table to bring it back?
Move to table.
A motion to table by Commissioner Samora. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gallon. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. It'll be brought at the next meeting, I guess. Next item, twenty-four?
Item twenty-four. Consideration and action to award a contract for taxi, for rehabilitation of taxiway D and E for the Brownsville South Padre Ellen International Airport.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. I would like to request this item to be table until the following meeting.
Move to table.
Second.
Motion to, to table, Commissioner Samora makes a motion, Commissioner Longoria second sit. Commissioner Camarillo second sit.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item twenty-five. Consideration and action to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvements for East Fourteenth Street.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvements for East Fourteenth Street to GNT Paving of Brownsville, Texas, a low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand six-hundred-and-eighty dollars and seventy-one cents. The engineer's cost estimate for this project is, is one million one sixteen zero zero three, which is three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and twenty, twenty-nine cents higher than the recommended bid. The contractor is obligated to complete work within a hundred-and-fifty consecutive calendar days according to the project specifications. Funding for this procurement will be derived from the two thousand and eight GO bond account eighty-three dash eighty-two zero three dash ninety-eight eighty-five. Engineering department concurs with this recommendation.
Move to approve. Okay, this is an action item. Motion approved by Commissioner Atkinson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item twenty-six. Consideration and action to award a contract for street and, street paving and drainage improvements for Lindale Street.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvements for West Elizabeth to R&amp;R Paving Company out of Brownsville, Texas, a low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Lindale.
Lindale.
Do I need to use a computer? Give me one second. Let me just find the, the correct page. I don't have the correct page. Okay, the recommendation is to award a, uh, well, this is not the correct page.
There, Robert.
Okay, this is to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvements for Lindale Street to R and R Paving of Brownsville, Texas, a low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of six hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty, and twenty-five cents. Okay, the engineer's cost estimate for this project is nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two ninety-nine point twenty-five higher. This contract, the contractor is obligated to complete the work within a hundred and fifty consecutive calendar days. Funding for this procurement will be derived from the two thousand and eight G O bond account number eighty-three dash eighty-two zero seven dash ninety-three thirty, and Engineering Department concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora. Uh, Robert, how could-
Yes, sir.
How could we underestimate two hundred thousand dollars?
Well, those, those are the engineers that they have estimates, uh, basically, when, when they start working on those numbers, sometimes they start like two months prior to, to bidding the project. So, sometimes, uh, components, materials, you know, the, the, there's differences in pricing. Also, uh, since, you know, for some companies, sometimes there's not enough work. Sometimes, there's a tendency right now because of the, the economy to give us a better price, so we're just taking advantage of that.
We have several bidders, right?
Yes.
We have several bidders?
Yeah, we have several bidders.
Mr. Luna, but they're not over, they're, they're under. Isn't that correct?
All the bids that we are presenting, the, the prices under the engineer's estimate, yes.
Because it says here the two thirty-five is higher than recommended.
Yeah, no, there's-
Which I, which is I'm sure incorrect, but-
Yeah, it's incorrect. There's a few typos. I got it mixed up on the agenda.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-six?
Item twenty-seven, consideration in action to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvements for West Fourth Street, West Washington Street, and Hoff Lane.
Would approve?
We have a motion approved. We have a second by Commissioner Akerson. Any discussion?
Just wanted to, real quick, uh, thank you to engineering that we finally got Hoff on, finally got it done, and my apologies to the people because it's been several years that we've been discussing on getting the street done, and it's finally going to get done, so thank you for finally getting it done.
Well, it's better late than never.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-eight?
Item twenty-eight, consideration in action to award a term contract for residential solid waste and brush bulky collection services for the City of Brownsville.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for residential solid waste and brush bulky collection services to Allied Waste of Arlington, Texas, at the stipulated prices in, in the contract that is attached to the agenda. Also, Allied Waste Services will provide the city with a recycling pilot program as described in the proposal, and it's also part of the package. Um, Allied Waste will deliver a total of two hundred, um, eighteen-gallon curbside recycling containers through, throughout different, uh, sections of the city. The proposed pilot program will take place once a week, uh, over a three-month period to collect the materials at the curbside, transport recycling materials to the local recycling center, and, and track volumes, um, and resident participations. Now, at the end of this pilot program, a detail of, uh, of all this information will be presented to the city for analysis. Additionally, contractor, contractor will distribute a questionnaire to the residents who participate in the program to see if there is sufficient interest to possibly develop a citywide residential curbside recycling program. The primary term of this agreement will be for a period of five years commencing on April the first, two thousand and ten, terminating on March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Now, this agreement can be extended upon expiration of five years, primary term, on a month-to-month, on thirty days, uh, written notice to the city and the contractor for up to six months unless a longer period is agreed inviting. Now, there's a renewal on this agreement that might be extended by the, a written agreement between, uh, the city and the contractor for three consecutive five years, five-year periods, uh, upon the same terms and conditions. Uh, Evaluation Committee concurs with this recommendation.
Well, I've been very happy with your service. Do I have a motion approved?
Um, can you go over that pilot program again? Did you say two hundred rec, curbside recyclable container, recycling containers?
Yes, ma'am.
For how long?
Yeah, for three months.
And how are they going to pick the two hundred?
I'm sorry?
How are they going to pick the two hundred?
Well, I believe that what they want to do is they want to, they want to, uh, choose different- different sections of, uh-
Go ahead.
Different sections of, of, uh, the City of Brownsville, and, and, um, strategically, uh, have those containers, uh, you know, in different subdivisions, uh, for three months. And then, since it is a pilot program, and the city's not pay, is not paying for that pilot program, they just want to get more information from the public, to see if it's feasible, and to see if there's more participation from, from the public.
They got to pick and choose where to, um, minimize the risk and ensure success.
And that is, that will be together with the city, city's input.
Well, Mr. Luna, if, if we could somehow help in that process, I think, and that'd be great.
Definitely.
I want to commend you all for putting this on here and making this a part of the, uh, of the request for proposals. I think this is really the first step for, for the City of Brownsville to move forward on, on a green initiative in, in curbside recycling. Um, I can't, you know, I, I can't thank you all enough for doing this, and, and I look forward to the, to the partnership with, uh, with Allied Waste on, on this initiative. So, thank you all very much for that.
Thank you.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved. Commissioner Camarillo, second, but, uh, Commissioner Gallin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-nine?
Item twenty-nine, consideration in action to award a term contract for a weatherization assistance program for the Planning and Community Development Department of the City of Brownsville.
Staff recommendation is to award a term contract for weatherization assistance services on a rotation basis for the Planning and Community Development Department with each, with each of the following six general contractors, uh, three confirmed and three contingent, uh, and four contingent upon completion of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Weatherization Training Academy. And you will see the list of all the contractors that are participating on this contract. Now, the fees to be paid, uh, to the firms are based upon the negotiated construction pri, ma, uh, price matrix. There's a mistake. It says index. It should be, uh, price matrix. And will be the same for the seven general contractors. Now, the recommended general contractors will be assigned an equivalent amount of homes to be weatherized, uh, based upon rotation basis. This contract shall commence upon a, a war by the City Commission and shall expire April thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. That's, that's a correction that I needed to make also. It should say, uh, April thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. Now, the city reserves, uh, the option to extend the life of the contract for two additional twelve months at the same, for the same contr, uh, construction pri, price matrix that is attached to the specs, I mean, to the, to the agenda. Funding for this project is available from the American Recovery and Reimbursement Act to the department, to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs with an available balance of one million, six hundred thousand annually. Planning and community, Community Development Department concurs with this recommendation.
Okay.
Would approve?
Uh, motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item to adjourn, uh, I mean, motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Second.
Thanks, Robert.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Fill out your census.